All right, the time is six o'clock. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. All right, so we are going to begin with public comments, but I just want to let council know there is one comment on an engagement HQ. It's not for any specific agenda item, but if you could, you know, obviously review that and take it under consideration for the feedback that we get from the public. At this time, I'm going to open up for public comments. If you wish to speak, please step up to the podium, state your, say your name and address council, please.
Good evening. I'm Terry Cowan from the neighborhood that we call the Sternanistas. It's Sterns Lane and part of the Barton View Neighborhood Association. I've wanted to speak to the Flock license camera and some concerns. First off, I want to say that we support Chief Carter. Best chief we've ever had in Sunset Valley, and I've been here since 1991, and we support our police department. I understand that the data is not used for anything by Sunset Valley except stolen cars. Looking license plates of stolen cars, the Flock data? No? Okay, and the data is not stored locally? It's not stored on our servers, the license plate data? Okay, what happens to the data? There's been about two million hits, license plate hits, so far in the report that I read. And I wanted, a question I have, does it reside on the Flock servers? You, you all, if you've been plugged into media, there have been media reports about the Flock safety on requests, been providing the license plates data with state and federal authorities. And this violates our rights of privacy. And that, and there is a concern that information will be, can be used for political purposes for state and federal officials, for example, tracking license plates of protesters who demonstrate against, who may be demonstrating against a policy. Other communities are concerned about Flock as well. I know there's a debate in the City of Austin. I've been reading of communities that have dropped the service and are changing the contract to build in better protection for privacy. I'm concerned, in addition to the privacy issues, that word gets around, people shopping in Sunset Valley might be, their privacy might be at risk because we track the license plates here. They may choose to shop somewhere else, which can hurt our revenue, which would hurt our revenues. So my question to council is that you look at this issue. How can you assure us that Flock isn't selling the data? Or they're not reporting it on request to state and federal authorities? Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. I just wanted to give a couple of thoughts about the budget in general. I may speak to it specifically when we get to it. But the two things that I sort of wanted to point out about the budget is that there's too much money in play. When we have, when we, we used to have like a $400 to $500 sweep. And now for various reasons, we're getting, pushing a million a couple of years in a row. And as I understand it, I have to go back and look, but that's, that's a lot of money to have free, you know? And so, so that's a concern to me, and it's particularly a concern to me with the new, the new play in the administrative areas. I don't have any immediate concerns. I, I think we have fabulous staff. I adore them. I'm just looking at process. And in terms of process, I don't like that much money floating around. And so I'm also concerned about the loss of good data. In my mind, the last good data we had was 2019, and it's not really accessible to people, especially the general public. You know, we, we don't have access to the budget with all those numbers in an easy way for the public, the way we used to. And so I, I, I'm sorry about that a little bit. And, and I particularly didn't want to take this job if we didn't, which is Budget and Finance Chair, if anybody doesn't know that, if, if we didn't have that 2019 data, because to me, that was the last normal data. And it's really important to me to look at the 2019 data in relation to the current, because that shows the real trajectory to me. The pandemic numbers are appar, or have a lot of aberration in them, and they're now going to be our baseline numbers as we go forward. So I don't want to lose the 2019 numbers personally, because I think that's the trajectory that we should be looking at to see whether things are normal or not. And so, you know, right now, we have more of a three-year thing that pops up, and I'm not a fan. And I, I said I wasn't a fan when we got that, and I will reiterate, I'm still not a fan. And but, but I, I really, I'm also not a fan, which I said when y'all put that in, of the play. I think you can, you can do that, you can have staff have more flexibility if you have a tighter budget. But if you have, but, but having both makes me uncomfortable. So that's just my general overall reflections after going through this year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe I'll switch to speaker this time? All right, we're going to move on to staff reports, beginning with the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'll highlight a couple of items. So the Erica McGruder with Embrace HR, the city's new HR management consultant, has begun work. She was onsite last week and visited with myself, with finance manager and the department head. So we're very excited to get that project going. We have committee applications are due, the due date is September 8th, but if, we'll of course accept applications after that, but we would love for folks, residents, to apply by September 8th. And council will be making appointments for the fiscal year 2026, standing committees and the Arts Commission at the next meeting on September 16th. So we'll be sending, there'll be a reminder when the newsletter publishes on Friday, and I'm sure we'll send another gov delivery notice on, on Monday. And then the committees will be, like I know, one of the committees meets on Thursday, and they'll probably, you know, talk to current committee members, because just a reminder, if you're on a committee, if you're currently on a committee, you still have to apply to, to be appointed for the next year. I did want to talk to you all about the November 2025 election and the schedule. So, so I informed Mayor Brunner, so this year, because of the canvassing dates, the dates to canvas the election for entities, for local entities, are Friday, November 14th, or Monday, November 17th. So the, the election must be canvassed by, the last date is Monday, November 17th. We would normally have a regular meeting on Tuesday, November 18th. So we'll have to make a decision if we want to have a short sort of ceremonial meeting on Monday, the 17th, where we just, you know, canvas the results of the election, you know, say goodbye to outgoing council members and seat the new council members, and then, and then have a regular agenda with the new council on the 18th, or if we just want to have a long sort of regular meeting on Monday, the 17th. So we'll need to make that decision at some point.
Yeah, so what we're looking for, council, is feedback on, if you have availability, obviously, first of all, right? Because we have to, by law, canvas by the 17th, which does not allow us to have a council meeting on a regularly scheduled date. The first meeting in November, of course, is going to be the election itself, so there will not be a council meeting on that first Tuesday. And then by the third Tuesday, we would have passed the deadline. And so what I talked with the city administrator about is either having a very short meeting on that Monday, or potentially Friday before, but you know, it'd be, have to be one of those two dates, where we just canvass the results, seat the new council members, and proceed with a very brief agenda. But I believe we're going to have enough business to have a meeting in November. And hopefully, we can, we can do both of those at one time, but if not, then we'd have, you know, a, a split meeting in, in order to canvass the results. So I, I don't know if we can decide tonight unless everybody has their, their calendars ready, but does anybody have a preference they want us to give feedback on? Councilor Medicas?
I'm open on the 17th, and I'm happy to do the canvassing and then go into a regular meeting on the same night, rather than coming back on a second night.
Okay. Monday, November 17th. Oh, you won't be, will you be here the 18th? Here the 18th? Yes. Well, we have to, the, the outgoing council has to accept the results, and then we seat the new council, so.
I apologize, Mayor. I, my mind is on my notes that I diligently worked on today, and I don't have them. So my head is, was there while you were talking, so I apologize. So whatever day you pick, I'm sure will be good.
Okay. You're good either way. Oh, you prefer a meeting on the Friday before? Okay. You'll, you prefer a meeting on the Friday before? Okay, so let's, what I'll do is have Matt send out a, basically a poll asking for feedback, and then when we collect that all, we'll, we'll plan on scheduling and potentially canceling a meeting for the 18th and rescheduling it, or doing a called meeting for one of the alternative days to canvas the results. Okay, so look forward to getting that feedback. And Matt, thanks for coordinating that.
Yeah, we'll check with our council member elects as well. I'm sure we can find a date that works for everybody, so. But we have a very tight deadline from the county, so, and the state. Okay, so just wanted to highlight some upcoming events. So this Saturday at 9:00 AM over at the elementary school, there's going to be a community pickleball workshop led by our council member-elect, Don Dixon. So thank you so much to her for coordinating, for, for leading that. And then the following Saturday, September 13th, from 9:00 to 10:30, we're going to have a, the grand opening of the Savannah Trail at Upper Cougar Creek. So council, we hope that you all can attend. Parking will be at the shopping center over by docks, and that's sort of where we're telling people to enter. Unless, of course, you want to walk over from, but yeah, so that's, that's where we're telling the public to gather is over, over by docks. And that's all I have. That is Sep, Saturday, September 13th. Oh, and because we won't have a, another staff report, because if the item passes, we'll be canceling the October 7th meeting and National Night Out, and, and the backyard, the City Hall backyard grand opening will be Tuesday, October 7th. And I believe it's at 6, starts at 6:00 or 6:30, Chief? 6:30, starts at 6:30.
All right, any questions for the administration report? All right, moving on to Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Public Works has been hard at work, doing a lot of projects around the city. So we've had some work out in the South House Conservation Area, doing some fire break maintenance. We also had some help over at, we're cleaning out that cemetery area over by Home Depot, trying to get that cleaned up so that it's less inviting to camping and other things in that area. We are also working diligently on the City Hall backyard. You may notice there's an island of green out there. We, the guys all installed the lawn area last week so that we can get it established before people decide to walk on it for a National Night Out. So that's all going in, and so we'll be continuing to work really hard on getting that done and completed in the next few weeks so that we can have a really big party on the 7th. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any questions.
I did want to say that the City Hall backyard, it's great to see the progress there, especially seeing the tarps go up or the, you know, the, the awnings. I like the colors that were selected by Councilmember Medicas, as well as staff. So looking forward to that and glad to, to see you continue to work on it. I was also just going to note that I appreciate the, the update to the CIP website. I, I don't know if that was done recently, or I just hadn't seen it. So it's a nice graphical view of the projects that we've done over the last five years, and there's some, you know, details about each of those projects that are, they're there. I, I would say that there, the individual projects are still a little bit, they don't have a lot of details on them when you, when you look at them. But I, I think the, the new look, you know, and the overview is a, is a, a nice benefit, you know? So I appreciate that. With that, I'll turn it over to council for any follow-up questions for the Public Works. Councilor Rurrell?
I have a question. Have the, the fire hydrants in town been repainted this summer?
Some of them, we do that a lot of times with the kids over the summer, so some of them have been repainted. Our fire hydrants are red instead of the silver ones you see in City of Austin. You also may have noticed they, they were doing a lot of the hydrant testing over the last week or so. So you may have seen people out, you know, using the dehydrants and flow testing them and making sure they all pass for the standards they should, should be passing. So they were out doing that as well this last, last week, I believe.
Other questions for Public Works? Councilor Rosengard?
On the man, manholes that are sticking up in, in the meadows?
Yes.
There are 10 of them. And the only solution is to cut up the ribbon curb and then replace that as we are elevating the asphalt, or?
Yes, so that they, they meet up correctly. That is, that is the plan for that.
And there's no way to do it without cutting, cutting the ribbon curb?
Not correctly. We need to do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to public safety.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, there, last week, there was a little bit of controversy over the Flock cameras that we have. I just thought tonight I'd give a really brief overview of how we came to have the cameras, and then what we use the cameras for, and then the updates we're doing to be even more transparent, to try to relieve some of these concerns. The cameras were, in, in 2019, there was a series of burglaries and, and mail thefts in the city that occurred over two weekends in a row, and that, and that caused several residents to come to the PSC Committee meeting that month and request some kind of surveillance cameras. It was at their request that the Public Safety Committee began to look into the idea. Later in November, I believe, council approved the purchase of surveillance cameras. We didn't have any cameras in mind then. We were going to look at some cameras. It took us two years of trying various cameras. Most, most of them, they would install them for free, and then they would fail here. Some of them, the wind blew them over. It, it went on for about two years, but in 2021, we found these Flock cameras that met all of our needs. The cameras immediately started capturing these stolen vehicles. That wasn't our purpose for installing the cameras. It just seemed that a lot of stolen vehicles were being recovered in our shopping centers. During those first few months, we would get three or four, sometimes a week, that were stolen. And we suspected that they were using the cameras to go into shoplift. Sometimes in the, in the cars, we would find, like masks or guns and things like that, if young teen, groups of teenagers in these stolen cars. But that wasn't the purpose of getting the cameras. The purpose was to protect the stores and our residents. We put 10 cameras in the entrances and exits of the city. For, between 2021 and 2024, we had no complaints, no, well, we did have an incident where an officer didn't verify the information on the camera and ended up pulling over a woman who wasn't in a stolen vehicle. But between that time, we didn't have any incidents and no complaints from residents. In 2024, we received a grant to add six cameras by the Holiday Inn and in front of a couple of the shopping centers. The, so that gave us a total of 16 cameras. We didn't reapply for the grant this year, so this year, six of those cameras are going to go back. We'll be back down to 10 cameras at the entrances and exits of our city. The cameras have been useful for us. They help us to be proactive. Every police department in the area puts out bolos each day about various suspects. Today, for instance, there was a missing person, bolo on Jones, that the cameras picked up. Anyway, the, for us, if we, if we see these organized shoplifters, that there's a bolo out for this vehicle and these people, proactively, when they come to our city, we head to the stores. If they burglarized Ulta and Flugerville, for instance, when we see them, we head to the Flugerville, I mean, to the Ulta here in Sunset Valley. The bolos don't give us probable cause to pull the cars over. We have to develop that. They have to do something, but we're in the area. We try to be visible so that they can see us. That's what our intended use for the cameras is. The cameras also help us with, to stop our reliance on, like eyewitness evidence. If someone says this happened, instead of just relying on an eyewitness, we can go back to those cameras. If they say, oh, the person that did this was driving this car, we can go back and get a picture of that car, so it beefs up, you know, eyewitness evidence, which is the evidence we've been using. That's the, the, about the least reliable evidence that you can have. But these cameras add confirmation, and they build on that evidence. Anyway, in 2025, I started noticing that there was a lot of surrounding communities that were, there's some backlash against these cameras, that they've been used by federal authorities and other states, particularly in states where undocumented immigrants are allowed to register vehicles, states like Illinois. There's about 20 states where you can be an undocumented immigrant and still register your vehicle. Here in Texas and in 30 other states, it's nearly impossible to be undocumented and register your vehicle. You have to have insurance, and you have to have a state ID. So, but I can understand that in those areas, the cameras could be used for that purpose. It'd be very difficult, or they, they don't help in Texas because undocumented immigrants don't have their vehicle registered for the most part. But there's still a lot of controversy. A lot of misinformation about the cameras has been going out. And so without any complaints here, I decided, you know what, I'm going to debrief our Public Safety Committee and remind them that we have these cameras that I thought they were seeing on the news. And in addition, I had been putting information in all of our monthly blotters about our cameras, that it was our cameras that are catching these things, just so people knew. But I was interested in, in June of this year, just gauging our residents. I, I saw what was happening in Austin, San Marcos, and I wanted to know what our residents felt like it, felt about these cameras. So we had a public safety meeting. We covered the issues. At the end of the meeting, the cam, the Public Safety Committee, they wanted more transparency. They wanted information on who we share our cameras with. They wanted to know if we were auditing the cameras. And they wanted us to review the language with Flock, and that, that's ongoing. Part of the reason we haven't been able to get it completely done now is that it's been so controversial that I think most every agency is trying to do the same thing we're doing. We're just copying the paperwork on some of the agencies that, around here that kept their cameras. But soon, we will have, we're going to re-review the contract and all that, and we'll have it before council again. The, the department on its own is going to require every agency that we share the cameras with to fill out a form that says they won't use the cameras for immigration purposes, or, you know, to track down protesters and things like that. Now, we don't own, Terry was right, we don't own that information. So somebody acting, you know, in the So, somebody acting, you know, nefariously could, behind the scenes for Flock or for some other agency, they could violate our rules or violate the law and share that information. However, Flock has decided, as a result of being caught sharing information with the INS against Illinois law, they've decided that they're not going to share information with state, federal authorities as well. So, they're no longer doing that. At least that's what they're saying, that they're, they're doing, you know, that they're not sharing anymore. So, but to conclude, I mean, we are, we've had no complaints from our residents about it, about the cameras until we brought up the issue to our residents in an effort to be transparent and remind them that, you know, what's going on around these cameras. You know, we have the same cameras. And I do, I want to hear our residents' concerns. I just haven't heard that many until now expressing their concerns. It did come up at Public Safety when they looked at the cameras. We had a few members that had the same concern. In fact, the person who, who started this petition was a Public Safety member that I presented the information to. And we, we sent out all of the information that is in that petition to the Public Safety Committee at his request, but then we put out this petition. So, again, we welcome any complaints and certainly don't take any, if anyone's concerns personally. We work for you and we're willing to do whatever makes our residents comfortable. We'll continue to do our job. We'll do it less effectively. I mean, once technology gets let out of the bag, it's kind of hard to put it back. But again, there's no, you're not, it's not a, I understand that this is not a, anyone upset at the police department or at us, so, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Chief, for putting that information together. I'll also point out that on our website, you've also created a page for the transparency, essentially aggregation and, you know, information that's under the PD Department, which has up-to-date information about, you know, what agencies are, have access to the data, the number of, you know, times that the data's received, hit, something like that. Go ahead, please.
It's, it's not up there yet. That's what, Flock has to do that. They create that portal to do that, and we're in a, we're in line to get it done. If you, you can go to San Marcos PD and look what they've done. We're going to do all that and more with our portal. We're gonna have the exact one, but then there's some additional steps that we're gonna take here in Sunset Valley. But we're waiting for them to change. We're, we have some information up there, but there's even more. We can list the agencies that we share with so that you can know exactly which ones we share with.
And I just echo what, what you said, is that obviously this is something that is a flashpoint for communities. Recently, you know, some of the decisions that states like Illinois have made in order to try to revise or force Flock into aligning to the terms that, or the state laws in those cases, you know, are things that, that obviously highlight that there is potential misuse of the data. There's also other examples that individuals can potentially misuse the data if the data is accessible to them. We're trying to be, you know, obviously transparent as we can, but also open to, to feedback and potentially any, you know, anything that council wants to bring forward as part of any, any other changes would be something that I'd also welcome. The, just as another point, the petition that Chief was referencing was a petition that was started by a resident that was sent through this, the elementary school's PTA newsletter. And its intention, I think, is to, you know, raise some of the concerns that, and awareness of the concerns to that community. I think one of the things that council will be seeing is when that petition gets submitted, there'll be some feedback, additional feedback for council to consider as well. And so, that's, you know, one of the things that we've been getting some, you know, recent activity on is just, you know, an engagement from the elementary school in this, in this issue and, and some of the concerns they have regarding immigration and, you know, some of the, the federal agencies' utilization of that data. I will open it up for council for questions to public safety on any of the topics, especially the, the Flock cameras, or if there's something that council wishes that we want to bring back in the future as we continue this conversation, please let, you know, please go ahead and express that. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you. That was a good presentation, Chief. The, I, I think the transport, transparency portal has been updated. It's got all agencies now. Is that what you were waiting for?
There's, there's a few other items that people, that I'm noticing that people are, have said and that other cities have added to there. So, I want us to have the most up-to-date changes to it.
Okay.
Particularly like a copy of the letter that we want everybody, that everybody's gonna have to sign and a copy of our contract when we get it with Flock, should you approve it, that it needs to be on there so everybody can see it as well. If they want to report a violation, they can report it.
When, when does our contract renew with them?
The contract for the original ten ends in November, and then the contract for the six that is going back is in February. But we can go ahead and notify them that they can come and pick them up now.
Well, so if anything happens, because it's currently in the budget, it'd be better to either do it this year or do it during this budget or wait again?
I think the contract requires thirty-day notice for them.
Okay, so, okay. And then I think the last question I had was, I think it's in their, I would assume it's in their interest to not anger the municipalities that have them by kind of turning over information, but their hands might be tied a little bit. How, I just, there's a concept called like a, a warrant canary or canary warrant. Anyway, but it's, certain services can put something in their language that just says like, you know, we've never been asked by the FBI or ICE or anything for information. And then, once you see that go down, and you know, they haven't because they can't officially say that they've done anything. I'm just, I'm just trying to like almost war game it and just say like, how would we know if the information was ever shared?
You wouldn't unless it came up in a report or it was mentioned like in a warrant that got publicized, that how they got the information. The, the thing about Sunset Valley is the information that we put our own hot list, it's the way we do these cameras, it's almost useless to anyone else because we're looking for suspects. We don't have warrants out for people. I mean, our cameras are used for people that are already being looked at somewhere else. We wouldn't, the information that we have in there for, we don't have anything for our people here in Sunset Valley or even for vehicles unless they've been involved in a crime. There's no, these cameras don't pick up, for instance, the DPS database for, if I wanted to look at a group of cars, I would have to have some information about those cars in order for these cameras to be useful. They don't, there is no list of like people who are going through the immigration process or things like that. The cameras basically take a picture of a license in a car and it's, there's millions of pictures in that database. I, a human has to be looking for that information or entering that information. And again, there's laws, we're about to go through an audit at the end of the month with DPS about our use of information. They do that every two or three years. There's laws related to that already. If you misuse that information, such as in Illinois, they, they broke a state law when they did that. So, there's repercussions for that already. But any, you know, there's various people that make up law enforcement. Someone could, a, a bad actor could do, you know, could track his ex-wife or something like that or a protester that like that was missing. It's possible to, to do something like that. But if you get caught doing that, I mean, you've violated state and federal laws doing that.
And you, anyone is, since the cars are in public, like they, they're allowed to be, have their picture taken, right? You, I, I think, I think we just know that, you know, if you're out in public, then a picture can be taken of you and whatever. Are you, are, is a police officer allowed to stand at an intersection to just write down every single license plate number? Not, not look it up?
Yeah, you can, I can stand in front of any one of the streets and write down every license plate number and run every license plate number. And I can get behind every car and run every car's license plate to see if there's a warrant. These cameras, I remember in the 2010s, we, where I was, we put these cameras on our police cars and everywhere our car drove, we were running plates. It wasn't till 2019 that I knew that they were putting these cameras on poles and doing it, but they've been around and they're still, even in the places where they say they've gotten rid of them, I bet they're still on the cars, the police cars. They're on record. These tow trucks, they have license plate readers on them, looking for repossessed vehicles and all. That's where the technology started. So, it's out there. It's been out there. Our shopping centers, after we installed the six, a few of our shopping centers put cameras up, these same cameras that we're using. So, they're out there. That's what, the technology's out of the bag now. It's, it's, now, they don't share with law enforcement, but they're using those same cameras to prevent, again, repeat shoplifters from coming. They'll call us if they have somebody that's been trespassed already coming. But the cameras are out. They're in full force already.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pretend?
I wanted to say one thing. This is, to me, this is a conversation for another day, but I do want to say one thing. In the eight years that I've lived in Sunset Valley, I have never heard one word disparaging our police force, and I have heard nothing but praise for our officers. We are very fortunate to have you. This issue to me has nothing to do with how Sunset Valley PD is using, using these cameras. The issue lies outside of Sunset Valley. So, I don't want anyone to think that there is any kind of criticism of our police department or our officers.
Councilmember Rurrell?
Thank you. I, I have a question for you, and I'm not sure if you have an answer. This is really a procedural question on how the data is used. I'm just looking at the, at the statistics from the last thirty days. It looks like about, there's a hit on about point one percent of the plates that are red. So, for the ninety-nine point nine percent that don't make the hot list, did, what happens to that data? Is it stored? Is it immediately discarded? Can you talk about that? And again, I'm concerned about.
Sure.
What doesn't hit the hot list and how that's handled.
It's discarded after thirty days. It goes away. And we don't know about those thousands of cars. Unless we're looking for them, we don't know. After thirty days, it's gone.
Councilmember Rosengard?
I just wanted to say I am for the cameras. I have heard how many times that you have been able to solve a crime because of the cameras. And of course, the retail appreciated because if they're losing revenue because of all the theft that is going on, we're losing. And so, I am definitely supportive of the cameras.
Thank you. Councilmember Medicas?
So, I just have a question because I remember two, three years ago that we were talking about cameras for the City Hall complex because we were having some issues here. Are any of these cameras on the complex?
No, these are, they're just on the highway and the entrances to the city. These are, these cameras don't run all the time. They just take a picture of a plate and store that information. They're not like surveillance cameras like on the complex here.
So, we never got them for the city complex?
No, they wouldn't really be as much used.
Okay.
Here. They would only take a picture of the car. They don't continuously run.
Okay.
Well, we, I think we, you wanted to ask if we do have cameras around the City Hall complex, not Flock cameras? We have cameras around, yes.
Oh, we, we have camera, surveillance cameras.
That's my.
Yeah, I thought you meant do we have these Flock cameras? No.
Okay. So, when, when they take a picture of the car with the license plate, you're saying that that picture is stored for thirty days and then it goes away?
Yes.
On the Flock system?
It's supposed to. That's what our contract says. I don't know the veracity of some of the stories, but since this has come up, I've been reading from various sources and there's accusations that have been made that somehow in back channels, that information got out. But I, I don't know. As far as I know, and when I do a search, I can't go back thirty days. In fact, we've had incidents that were reported late, and we tried to go back and the information's not there.
It, it makes sense to me for the shopping center and the Holiday Inn, I don't know about entrance and exits around our city, but it, and I don't think it has anything really to do with Sunset Valley. I agree with Councilmember Young. I think it's just the fear of what's happening on a federal level that's, that's driving all of this. I don't believe we've had any negative issues with it in Sunset Valley per se. So, I, but I am concerned about the veracity or the reliability, the trustworthiness of the company. And, and what guarantee would we have if they store this data and the federal government came in and said they wanted access to that data? Because we've seen things happen that even though it was against law, state law or local law or even federal law, those laws are ignored.
The, that information is really, if the federal government wants the information about a vehicle, they, they can get that from a number of sources. I was just at a conference about, that covered this last week, and they can get a, they can get the information off of your Starlink in your car. It's already available to them, and they would just get a warrant to get that information from any carrier, your cell phone carrier. And we can get it too. There's, we can do it the long way and get, I could get your cell phone information if you could, if you're a suspect in a crime and I have probable cause. The cameras, again, just make it easier and also, but the cameras are also helpful on the other end. The old way that you would do an investigation, let's, somebody tells you that three, let's say, three black males in a red car robbed me. The old way is you put that information out on the radio, officers begin looking for three black males in a red car. Inevitably, they stop people who shouldn't be stopped. Incidents happen and generate, something bad can happen or at the least, bad blood can occur. This way, you put that information out there, you're looking at a picture of the car, you know where the car is going. So, it has the, the ability to prevent things, as many things that happen, and it has prevented. And also, again, eyewitness testimony, we get people that say, this is the, this is the car that, that did it. And then we can look and see this car wasn't even in our town when it occurred, so it's not that person. So, we're not wasting weeks calling someone, accusing someone. To me, that's the benefit of it. It's just the way it helps us to strengthen our evidence instead of, I mean, we could go back to that, but why would you when you have, you know there's a better way to do it?
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, that's how I expect that this topic will continue to provide forum for discussion and may even come back to council at some point. I certainly applaud Chief for taking as much steps as we can to safeguard our, our data and the concerns that have been raised and very interested in seeing where we can get with that. If we have this technology of, I think it obviously should be safeguarded as much as we can. And I know that obviously technology is very hard to rein in once you have it. That's the case with a lot of the other examples that you've, you've given as well. You know, carrying around a cell phone is essentially a tracker now for, for individuals for, for good or ill. You know, it has a lot of positive things, but also misuse can occur and has occurred. But I look forward to those updates and also the feedback from the community as we go forward in our assessments. Councilmember Rosengard?
Since we're still on public safety, I had some notes that I, I watched a thirty-minute class last night that we all got invites to, and it was about cyber attacks. And it was about cyber attacks. Uh, your VPNs and your firewalls can be hacked into even though we all want to believe that they're safe. And for instance, uh, they shared a story that, um, these criminals are taking data for ransom. And they, they were able to watch somebody's computer. And this company utilized email to try, to purchase insurance against cyber attacks. They saw that email, copied the insurance policy, knew the insurance would pay up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then they, they, um, got their information and held it ransom and said, we will not go one penny lower because we know your insurance will pay seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we demand seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to release your data. So I'm warning everybody with AI, they're telling us that their emails now that they're sending out to people look almost perfect. They're duplicating how we respond in emails with AI. And so please be vigilant. Please, uh, if you haven't had a chance, watch this class. Or listen to it at least. And gosh, I wish we could get someone to come and, and speak about what's going on right now because there's, there's some really bad stuff happening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Council, we're going to move on to next agenda item, which is consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Councilor Rosengard.
I move to approve on consent agenda item number seven. Nope, I'm wrong. Number five, number six, and then number seven.
All right. So there's a motion to approve on consent, item number five, six, and seven. Does anybody want to pull those for discussion? Councilor Medikas?
Second.
Oh, second, okay. All right. Any of those items pulled for any council members? All right. All those in favor of approving on consent, item number five, six, and seven, say aye.
Aye.
I thought we were pulling seven. Did you say we were pulling seven?
No.
She seconded.
She seconded.
Oh. Sorry, I thought Karen said that we were going to pull seven. I would like to pull seven.
Did you want to pull seven?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll pull seven. So let's, um, sorry, I didn't get, get that full information. So we'll revise that to approve on consent, number five and six. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent, the minutes from the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. And item number six, um, canceling the October seventh, twenty twenty-five regular city council meeting, which will also be the same date as National Night Out, uh, so that the, uh, community can attend that event and the council members can too. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, which is consider an act on approval of a change order. Change order number two for the Brody Lane Mill and Overlay Project to add repairs to multiple areas of subsidence within the Meadows neighborhood. And Mayor Potem, I'll hand it over to you for questions on this particular item.
I just wanted to say that, um, I have no objections to what we want to do here. This is a good thing to do, obviously. I have objections to how it's being done. Which is that we're taking money left over from the money we had for the contingency for the Brody Lane project for an unrelated project. I don't think that's a good way to do things. Where we say, oh, we have this other thing that we want to do that's unrelated to what we allocated money for. So we'll just take this extra money from it and do this. I think it should be treated as a separate project. It makes sense to add it to the change order. Because that helps us save money with something we've got, but this should have come up as a separate item. Um, because I think it's putting it into part of this, making this part of this other unrelated project, I think is bad accounting, both from a project perspective and from a financial perspective. This is a different thing. I think in the future with, if we're going to have contingency money that gets left over from projects, it should either go back into the funds it came from. Or we shouldn't do the contingencies at all because this is something that, and this is not a criticism of what staff is doing, other than I think they're taking a, a shortcut that they shouldn't take. But this is something could easily be abused in the future. Right? I've got this extra money. I'm going to put it on this completely unrelated project because we've got this money. I'm going to do it. And we're going to throw it into a consent item for, for council to rubber stamp. I don't think that's a good way of doing things. I think this should have been presented as a separate project with some justification and explanation of it. And I think maybe at council retreat, we should talk about how we want things like this to happen. And I'm really not going to push back on this beyond that, but I don't think this is a good way to do things.
And just as a quick follow-up question to that, because I, I agree muddying a project in the future is going to make it hard for us to say the scope of Brody Lane, you know, itself is not inflated because of this essentially, right? You know, we don't have the, the granularity to really pull that out in the future numbers, um, unless we safeguard it. And I, I agree though that while we already have mobilization, it's, you know, obviously more cost efficient. Is the objection more about how it's being asked for approval and presentation? Or is it that we, even with this cost savings, it's really, we, we want to make sure that there's um, a, a, a different, you know, separate process for bidding?
We should be allocating the money out of a different bucket. Right? It's a different project. Yes, it can go on the change order. That's fine.
Okay. So as long as, as long as we have a way of essentially identifying that this is a separate project from a both a financial sense, but also a council review sense, then I think that's, that's your concern.
Right. Cause it'd be accounted and, and it should be accounted for and tracked as a separate project because it is a separate project.
Um, I saw Councilor Rosengard and then Councilor Johnson.
Um, Carolyn, number one, is this a street repair and maintenance job? And number two, was this discussed in Public Works?
No, this came, well, um, actually we have discussed it in Public Works several times. I'm sorry, we did. And this is a street repair and maintenance, this is a street repair job basically. So, and the Brody Mill and Overlay Project is a street fund project. And so we are using street funds for that project, basically. I guess from an accounting perspective, we could create a new line item and reallocate street fund projects as a new line item, um, which would be a budget amendment.
Well, could there, I guess, say from an accounting perspective, maybe, you know, is there a way or is, can we think of a way that, you know, this could be, I mean, obviously it's related to the, the contractor, we're paying them out of this, but could we have a separate line item and still pay the same, um, the same project, you know, or it's the same contractor, I mean, so that we have a way of tracking that in the future?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that, that's one of the concerns is just that, you know, if we take this money, which the total project should have had the contingency go back to this, the CIP essentially.
Right.
Or, you know, eventually the street fund if we don't use it. Um, that we can make sure that this is tracked for future, um, visibility into the, uh, into where the money was spent. Okay.
We could bring back a budget amendment at the next meeting, which creates a new line item in Fund Thirty, Department Fourteen, to call out the amount that is being paid for the Lovegrass repairs or Meadows repairs.
Councilor Johnson.
Is, so I, I, I agree with Chip. It, it just, this is something where five years later, we look back and say like, how did we overrun? And then like, nobody remembers. So can we, do you think we should just pull this one tonight and then just do?
I think you could approve the change order and we would come back with a budget amendment.
Okay.
The, the action would be approve a change order and direct staff to bring back a budget amendment.
Yeah, I, I don't want to slow this down. I just think we should do things differently in the future.
I, I, you know, I, I, I think we're working through it and it was like kind of a nimble thinking. The, the, the amount is so small that I, you know, we could have risked nobody even bidding on coming out to do it. Then you're just like, you know, so, um, it, it's not, it, it's not, but I mean.
I, I think the concern raised is very valid. We need to make sure that we have a way of having, like I said, the granularity of tracking these as two separate things. And it sounds like that a mechanism that's been proposed is created a separate budget, budget line item, bring back a, um, budget amendment that'll make sure that that's tracked that way. And I will bring it to our council retreat as a discussion of how do we make sure that we do this for future projects when this decision point comes? Because I don't like the city not being able to take advantage of saving, cost savings where we can. But we also just need to make a way to safeguard that that is, is visible, you know, how this, this is. So I appreciate you, you bringing up the concern. Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, I, I think if we just work into our process, you know, some last second uh, nimble behavior, then we can probably like see some benefits from that, but, uh, yeah.
Any further discussion or motion? Councilor Johnson.
He pulled it, uh, okay. I'll do it. Uh, I move we, uh, act on approval of change order number two for the Brody Mill and Overlay Project to add repairs to multiple areas of sub, subsidence within the Meadows neighborhood.
And to bring back?
And to bring back a, a budget amendment with the new line item. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. We're now moving on to our last agenda item. Um, I'm hopeful that we can get this done before ten o'clock. Unlike our previous meetings where we've gone pretty long. Um, however, this is the, um, public hearing and presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed budget. And as a reminder, um, we are scheduled to adopt this at our next council meeting on September sixteenth. If we need to, we can schedule work sessions, uh, for additional time, uh, with us. We did already incorporate some of the feedback from our previous meeting, um, which the city minister will go over as part of the introduction to this item. However, we definitely want to capture any potential changes, um, before we bring back on the sixteenth so that we have a clean budget to review. So if there's additional feedback or changes that, um, council wants to give direction for, um, we will capture that tonight. Um, with that, I'm going to hand it over to the city administrator for introduction to this item and updates since our last meeting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a very short slideshow that just, like the mayor said, sort of, provides an overview of the changes. Um, and what's in the new budget that was included in the backup and, and what items, uh, are to still be considered. Um, so again, this is, uh, changes from the, what was filed on August twelfth with the mayor's budget from, uh, based on discussion and just additional information that, that staff, uh, received. So, uh, overall revenues, external revenues, there were no changes from the mayor's budget. Operating expenses, there was a net increase of, uh, just under five thousand dollars. So the changes there are, we, uh, were able to negotiate, uh, with, with staff and, uh, our insurance broker were able to negotiate with Curative. We were looking at a twenty-one percent increase for medical benefits and now it's just going to be an eighteen and a half percent increase resulting in lower cost. We also, uh, staff worked on updating our UNAM, uh, uh, benefits, which are life, short-term disability and long-term disability. Um, those rates have been updated to reflect current coverage and salary adjustments. Um, so overall, there was a decrease of about ten thousand dollars for, for personnel-related costs. Um, which affects all personnel-related funds, general, utility, street, venue, crime control. Um, other changes were based on some, uh, council feedback. So we increased, um, uh, repairs and maintenance trails by five thousand to make repairs over, uh, on Lovegrass Lane. Both for the drainage issues that are going on and also to remove the fencing and hopefully put rocks or some other type of barrier to prevent people from sort of creating a trail. So we increased that. And then unfortunately, if you all haven't seen it, the council ring was hit yet again by another vehicle. Um, this time though, we do have an incident report and so we, um, uh, we'll be filing a claim. But, um, staff is recommending it's been hit again and again. So we need to move the ring. So it's, uh, it's still on this side of, uh, the side of City Hall, but it's away, uh, from a direct path that a vehicle could, uh, could strike it. So, uh, we're estimating about, it's going to cost about ten thousand dollars. We're hoping to recoup at least half of that from insurance, but we wanted to make an increase to repairs and maintenance parks and grounds by ten thousand. So overall, that's a fifteen thousand dollar um, increase to the general fund, public works department budget. So, um, with the decrease in, in personnel costs, increase in operation, it was a net increase of operating expenses of, like I said, just under five thousand. Um, so you can see the total operating expenses there. Here's a chart, again, just comparing the updated budget to the, uh, current budget. So we're looking at a three percent increase, this is operating expenses. We're looking at a three percent increase, uh, total in salaries, benefits and other compensation. And that includes, um, salary adjustments and, uh, merit base and step increases. Just under a percent increase in contractual services. We actually have a decrease in, uh, operating expenses of about eleven percent. And a one percent increase in community programs. So overall, it's pretty much a net just, uh, slight, slight decrease in, uh, total operating expenses. Our capital budget, so updates from the, from what was filed in the mayor's budget was adding one additional project. We've discussed this before. It's the monument signs. So I believe in June, the public works director brought some options. Council had some feedback and wanted some, some more options. So the public works director, I believe by the next meeting, will have some options. Both from Art Scene Alliance and maybe another couple, a couple of other companies for council to look at. We would like to go ahead and put a placeholder in the budget for fifty thousand. Uh, so there was an additional transfer from the general fund to the CIP fund. And, uh, most of that fifty thousand is fun, is funded from the remaining ARPA fund. So that was the American Rescue Plan Act. And that thirty-one K is the, the remaining funds from that, um, assistance from the federal government. So there's a new project, uh, in, which increased the CIP expenses by fifty thousand dollars. Items, uh, other items for council consideration, and these are not in the, in, in the, the current budget. So utility rates, um, Councilmember Rosengard proposed not increasing, um, residential water and wastewater rates. So that is an option for council. Uh, for janitorial services, staff is proposing to return to contractual services rather than, uh, keeping that as a part-time in-house position. Uh, the assistant public works director has already received one proposal that's promising, uh, but, uh, and it's, it's well below the competitive bid threshold, but we'll need, uh, four more proposals to, to compare. So we'll hopefully have those by the next meeting. And of course, the budgetary impact will depend on, on the proposal and if council selects it. Uh, and then a final item that we didn't want to lose track of is the Jones Road traffic study. I know some residents have been really concerned over the years with, uh, traffic on Jones Road. And I believe the public works committee discussed this issue and, and discussed the possibility of, of a traffic study. So, um, however, staff, you know, staff will need to get quotes for, uh, a professional traffic study. But staff believes that we should be able to fund that within the operational budget of the street fund. So within, uh, repair and maintenance streets. So we don't believe that an additional, um, additional funding will be needed, but we just wanted to make sure that that gets addressed. So. Those were really the only changes. And be happy to answer any questions, especially go over any of the, the new items.
Can you go back to the last slide?
This one?
So, uh, this is in the backup, but for the utility rates, if we, um, hold the residential water and wastewater rates flat, that would result in an additional transfer of twenty-four K is what the, the number in the backup is. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, it would be, so it would basically be if we, if we did not increase water and wastewater rates for residents in the budget, we would need, um, the revenues would, would be decreased by twenty-four thousand. So that would be an additional twenty-four thousand in, um, in a general fund transfer for the operational subsidy.
Okay. The janitorial services, the, at least the, the one bit that we got was very close, almost like a wash in terms of like total cost because we'd have consumables.
Yeah, it would be a slight increase, a, a slight increase, but it would be, you know, the personnel costs would go down. And then our consumables would go down. Because the company would be providing those.
So that, that could be something that it, we may want to put in the budget, but it also wouldn't necessarily increase costs if we left it out and we just had to make some budget amendments or changes afterwards. And then the Jones Road traffic study, this is fundable within our, um, repair and maintenance, but we'd want to create a separate project for this with some cost estimates? Or how would we track this in, as part of the budget?
No, it would just be within the repair and maintenance fund. We wouldn't be doing, uh, a separate project.
So we wouldn't have to do additional transfer because we'd have enough funding right now in the repair and maintenance as-is?
As of right now, yes, we believe so.
Okay. Do we know the cost of what that study would be?
I think the one, I think we got one quote and I think it was forty K. So.
Forty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
All right. So council, um, we tried to make sure that it was clear as possible where the changes were. Um, that's why the budget sheets were reprinted. Um, so hopefully that's easy for you to scan down and identify. Most of the changes obviously are related to personnel adjustments because we were able to have some cost savings on the benefit side, um, while also having to finalize, I think, the cost for the, the short-term disability, the long-term disability and life insurance. So, um, that's where you see a lot of those, like small changes across all the budgets. And then the major items that were called out are obviously the, the council ring, unfortunately keeps getting, uh, keeps getting its own, uh, impact. Uh, we have, um, the trails for Lovegrass and then the fifty K for a project that we wanted to, um, make some progress on. We weren't able to complete that this year. We weren't able to complete that this year. So essentially, this is creating a place for it next year without having to do a budget amendment. If council wants to move forward with, with that or if council does not want to make a decision on that and wants to wait until we have identified the signs and the total cost, that would then come back as a budget amendment for next fiscal year. So this is essentially putting out some money, a placeholder money. We'd probably have to do a budget amendment anyway because we don't know the final cost. But with that, I'll hand it over to council members for questions. Councilmember Rosengarden?
So this is the second time the council ring has been hit. The first time after it was hit, I suggested that we put bollards up so that anybody who came off the road would ruin their vehicle versus our council ring. Now, we're going, going to move the council ring. We still haven't solved the problem. So what's the problem that is happening there with two accidents within the last two years? So what's new?
Both of them, both of the accidents were inattentive drivers, probably traveling too fast for this, for that curb.
Okay.
I think one, one thing that I would recommend is when we move the council ring, it'll obviously not be a target anymore. But I think it was the lieutenant who suggested that we actually put some rocks there so that cars no longer are, don't end up in the parking lot for.
Correct.
Public works.
Because we still haven't solved the problem.
So there's, you know, something that is less valuable to, you know, prevent the cars from going where they shouldn't go, so yeah.
For instance, we've had an older person hit the gas pedal instead of the brake and go across the creek bed into a building that I worked at years ago up north. So I know what happens and like I said, we didn't solve the problem, so. Moving on from that, unless chief wants to add anything?
No, one of the big boulders would definitely stop it.
Solve that. Big limestone square or something, yeah.
Oh yeah, to what end, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I don't want to cause anyone injury, but I want them to pay attention. So if there was some way to do that. The other, I had a number of questions now. When we're talking about janitorial services, it didn't work on having someone part-time and we're going back to contract, contractual? What happened?
I can speak a little to that. It's, it's probably partly how much we pay these individuals to do our cleaning and the fact that it's only part-time and we have four buildings. Without going into too much detail, it's just, it's hard to manage that on top of all the other duties that I am assigned to do.
Okay. Well, before we went to a part-time person, one of the things that I wanted to note is that our building is 20,222 square feet. We pay $28,837 for janitorial a year. We pay 2424 for janitorial supplies a year. And when you add up the buildings here, they come very close to our square footage. So when you look at contracts, keep that number in mind. Around 28,829,000 would be a good reasonable amount. Higher than that than they're, they're expecting too much.
Yeah, I think the one quote that we got was just over 25,000.
Okay.
It's like $10.90 or $11.16 a square foot or something like that.
And anytime you build into the contract, certain things like clean out waste baskets monthly or wash them out, et cetera, they just increase the, the revenue that they want to get and it never gets done. So there's certain things you have to watch for on the scope of work. All right, thanks. And then going back to the changes from the August budget presented and then the budget presented tonight. On revenues, it was 16,178,655. Tonight it's 16,278,158, which is $99,503 more than August council meeting. I love inflated revenue, extra revenue, that's nice. Where did it come from? Because it's not 24,000.
It's, it's in transfers. So the, so because we had an additional project, so that requires more transfers, right? For the 50K, leaving the general fund, going to the CIP. And then you have adjustments, anytime you touch personnel, a lot of things change. Because if you touch personnel, then the utility fund changes and so the subsidy has to change. And then additionally too, I believe because personnel was affected, that also affected the crime control transfer that we are transferring to. There was a very slight change in revenue there, let's see. Yeah, see, like this page, so this page that breaks, breaks it down by sub GL. We've got revenue, meaning these are external revenues or revenues that we receive, and then we've got transfers. There's no changes in, in revenue, all the changes are in transfers.
Okay. If you could blow that up bigger.
You got it.
Because for us to see it on our little laptop versus what I have at home.
Sorry. So you can see here, so the, there was a change in the general fund transfer.
Okay.
Utility went down $520. And then this is a transfer into the CIP fund. So that's where that, these totals here are the 99,000.
There's the 99,503.
Yep.
Yep. And then the same question would be on expenses because we were at 14,657 and now we're at 14,762. We went up 104,415 in expenses.
Correct. So you have to remember that transfers are also, a transfer in is a revenue and a transfer out is an expense. So that's why I tried to break it down by operating. So operating expenses, so this is personnel right here. Personnel costs went down by about 10,000 and that was mostly due to the decrease in medical premiums. And then contractual did not change at all. $15,000 increase in other operating expenses for the, for the council ring and the Lovegrass Trail repairs. And then a $50,000 increase in projects. And then these finally, the 49,50286, that's transfers out, outgoing transfers.
Okay, so I should see a new number of 104,000 somewhere.
Sorry. So what are you looking for, councilman? The total?
The total, yeah. So we've got 49,000. If you add them all up, they should come out to 104. And what I see instead is negative 49. Because they're transfers.
Yes. I believe, yes. Well. Yes. I believe so, yes. Yeah, because just remember, this report is looking at all, like all of the funds. And then there's individual reports for each fund.
Yep, that's exactly it. Okay, got it.
Other questions, councilmember Rosengarden? Or do you want to?
I'll let some others talk and I've got others later.
Okay, great. Councilmember Rurrell and then councilmember Medikus.
Yeah, I have a quick question for the city administrator concerning the, the reduction in premiums for the benefit package. Am I fair in assuming that that's not, that there's not a reduction in the services of being offered associated with that?
No, thankfully not. Actually, we're getting some increase in benefits. The Curative now offers, or chiropractic services are now included. I think that was a, a big demand from their customers, so they included that in. The increase was just due to, like I said, we had, last time we had, we had a bad year, right? Where our claims, you know, outweighed our, the premiums that we paid. However, we were able to work with them and, and give them some more data and so they came down to 18.5%. So very grateful of staff members that worked on that and also Jane at Higginbotham, our insurance broker, were able to negotiate a better price for us. Hopefully, we won't see that kind of increase next year, so.
Councilmember Medikus?
Were you done?
I'm done.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So just had a couple of things. The council ring, how often has that been used?
Current location?
Correct.
It has, I would say it's probably not used very often. I think by moving it over to this location, I think it will actually get used and, and be part of the facility. Right now, it's kind of just out on the corner, kind of away from everything. It was, you know, built there when city council was in that little building over there that's now a, you know, a garden. So then it was closed to city council and it made sense. Now it's kind of far away and removed. So I think by moving it over here, it will actually gain some use. And if you've ever not done it before, it's actually really cool. It's like an echo chamber and stuff.
Right, I've sat in it before.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, like, where over here? Or would it be better to put it in phase two of the community back, the city hall backyard where we are talking about elaborate?
Yeah, well, I think I don't, we can, we can consider that, but we really considered this area in the front. We kind of met with the, the stone mason and stuff and looked at this area in the front up here. There's a nice, it gets a nice amount of shade in the afternoon, so that makes it a, a nice place to be. But it would be at the front of the building, basically. It's where we're looking now.
Where my cursor is?
So, yeah. So my concern is like, how often does anybody go into the front yard? I mean, we all enter the building from the parking lot and I just don't know that it makes sense to put it there and then not have it.
And I don't need to, we can move it to the back door too. The location, we can discuss sometimes that are probably, it just needs to be not where it's.
Right, needs to be not where it's currently located.
And I just would like us to consider not having it along the road, someplace where it'd be reused more often and it'd be pleasant to sit.
Yeah, it, it would be a nice seating area, so it can be incorporated, we could incorporate it somewhere.
So I'd just like to, for us to consider that. And then on the water issue, you know, we've talked about this for many years, about the prices of water and water scarcity and everything. And we, Carolyn put together a 10-year plan looking at how we could use water and wastewater, how we could start to get up to covering that expense in the billing. And then we had years where we didn't pass it on when it was supposed to be passed on. And my concern with like not passing it on again or not increasing it is that what is going to happen when the water bill goes to a level where we're going to have to pass it on? And then our residents are going to have a huge increase all at once. I think the 10-year plan made a lot more sense because it was a little bit out of time. So I would really not be in favor of kicking this down the road yet again. And then the other thing, I had one other thing. And that was, I'd like to see us move forward with our commitment to parks and open space and commit 500,000 to, of the non-committed money to the future Uplands Park construction. That's all I had.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. It's gonna sound like a joke, but chief, can we see, can we just do a search for like damaged vehicles? You said you got a, you got a report, but that person took off, right? No, the person that hit the, that hit the council ring? Could you search for like a damaged vehicle? Because I, I think I got a picture within like 12 hours of it happening.
You could put that parameter in there.
Yeah.
A dent or something.
But that person took off, right?
Now, there's a police report on that.
There's a police report?
We have a report. It was a person who was reaching back to give his dog some water and then went off the road and hit the, we know who it was.
Oh, okay, well, it's nice because the last one was just, they disappeared. Okay, that's great.
Yeah, the last one, even that one, we knew who it was, they just.
I wasn't under the impression that someone on staff fixed it last time or like did the masonry? Oh, because it looked really nice.
No, it was.
We have the skill.
The same guy that quoted us to fix it again was the guy that fixed it the first time.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, every time I went by and it was night before it got wrecked again, I always thought how nice it looked and I thought that's like good in-house training for, you know, like learning a masonry skill, but I guess that's not the, I guess that's not it. You know, we, nobody goes in the front because there's nothing to do. So I, I think it would maybe be nice out there. I'd never let my kids go to where it is right now because it's right next to the road. You know, you fall off it and you're just in the road. So I'm not going to die on this, but like, you know, out front, it would be nice. We have a ton of amenities out there, so maybe spread them around a little bit more. The, um. The, do you require the cleaning to be done in the evening?
It's, it's after the offices are closed. It, it just makes it easier on staff. Obviously, the police department's 24/7, so.
Yeah.
There will be people there, but it's never usually a problem.
I, I know adding someone else for you to manage is not ideal, but I, I don't see how having a company that has all that overhead is cheaper than just like finding someone. Like if you moved it towards the day, it just like opens it up to more people, like women that have kids that are now in school, I guess, in the summer, that that kind of like goes away. But it's like a very specific person that is working at night, I don't know. But if it can, if it can be cheaper, I guess, but.
And the, the last time that we went to the job, we had 180 applicants. Of those 180, only four of them were actually like qualified to do the job. I know qualified to be a janitorial stretch, but they had prior cleaning services at different police departments. And only one person actually showed up for the interview. So the struggle of actually finding an individual to clean.
Okay. This is just like a, an idea I had when I was talking to a staff member. The, do we do anything to help with like tolls for people that drive in from farther away? For like toll reimbursement or anything? Do we have any idea how much that would be for?
Well, the. I mean, I spend like $6 a day coming in the toll road, so.
Well, no, so exactly. And it's, Austin is very expensive. I could not afford to buy my house if I bought it today, you know? And so it's just like, we all know how expensive it is and so we, we realize. And just like to remain competitive, you guys always say like, it's good, it's good to be here. Whatever. But like, just another perk that isn't just like a straight-up like salary kind of whatever. And I was just curious to see like what it was because it is, I, I never take MOPAC unless I'm in that toll, toll lane. I just won't do it. I just, but I know how nice it is to just be able to get to work in a reasonable amount of time when you live far out. So yeah, $6 a day, the person I talked to said it was $50 a week. That adds up, so. It was just a thought and your initial.
The, the police department has the vehicle stipend, which, I mean, chief, chief added that for, you know, a variety of reasons, I think. Given that a lot of our officers, well, at least at the time, were coming in really far. I think that was a consideration. The other thing that, unlike other departments, we're not going to ever have vehicles for them to take home. But, you know, that could be something that we look at as a, we have those sort of other compensation line items. It just becomes, you know, I don't know, want to talk to legal and our HR about, okay, so, you know, if that's, if toll reimbursements are, you know, kind of an okay thing. And is it a reimbursement or is it, you know, an allowance, like how that, how that works?
Yeah.
So.
Chief, we're gonna weigh in on that?
I included a, sort of a fuel reimbursement for ours because the other agencies around here all put it with, well, not all of them, but Westlake Hills did the same, they did it the year before. Each year, something. They've now changed their structure again as well, so there'll be something next year that I'll have to look at for ours. But it, I know that we have three officers that they got together and had asked about having, is there a way that the city can purchase like a toll tag for them? like, a toll tag for them, but, um, and I don't know how that would work as far as income, would it be, how that would work with the city, but it is, it's come up and it's probably going to be more and more agencies doing that in the future for their, especially here in Austin where all the, the police employees don't live in their city and they're having to go on these toll roads. Um, our fuel stipend was kind of an attempt to address that, but again, with public employees, if one of them finds out that someone's getting something that they have to use theirs for actual tolls and the other person feels like they, they don't, they live here in town and they don't use theirs, it's, it's tough to do, uh, to compare benefits like that. So I'd have to really study, I'm not, I'm certainly not against it, it's just, it's one of those things where you, it just, it's, each year, there's something different that you have to look at. Um, I know that it did come up at the police department this year, but, um, because a few employees were coming from far away and their, the stipend that they got was covering that instead of just their gas, so...
Yeah, the, and some people commute pretty far, and particularly come from San Marcos, and I, I hate driving, like, I have a five-year-old F-150 with 26,000 miles on it, and, uh, so some people are completely fine with it, but I remember when I used to have to drive for work, it was just, like, just put me in a terrible mood. Like, I just, terrible mood going there, terrible mood coming back, so just morale and, uh, pocketbook and stuff like that, but, okay, that was it.
Who's next? Councilor Rosengard.
Carolyn wanted to talk.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
At one point.
I think I was just going to follow up on, um, Councilmember Medicas's, um, comments on the utility rates. So I actually had my first, um, discussion with a, like, non, I guess, committee member resident who, um, was asking questions about the, um, utility rates today, and, um, we went over everything, very similar and had the very similar discussion to, you know, why kind of do these incremental increases? And they, they totally agreed that those are, you know, that, that, those are things that should be done. It makes better sense to do things in these incremental things and having, you know, sticker shock at one point, um, and they completely understand the reason why the city would be considering this. Um, but I think the thing that comes down to is that they were like, but I'm elderly and I have a fixed income and, you know, this is kind of, um, a difficult situation sometimes in these things. And so my recommendation would be that we reconsider the community assistance program and look at the threshold for, for qualifying for that and fix and make it so that it fits what Sunset Valley residents need in those situations. So I think that would be, um, a good way to address those individual kind of situations where people, it may be a bigger hurt than, you know, something that's, you know, some people may be like, oh, that's like two Starbucks cup, you know, two orders of coffee, that's no big deal, but for some people, this may be a bigger impact. So that would be something I would recommend, is that we come back with a different threshold for that program and fix that so that it actually helps those residents who are in need, and there, there will be people who actually qualify.
What's a threshold?
So when we created the program, we essentially just copied and pasted, uh, from the city of Austin, and so the, Austin uses, um, basically, if you qualify for any of these programs, SNAP, CHIP, um, to, you know, Travis County, so, you know, which I don't think hardly any of our residents qualify for that, then there's also a federal poverty level threshold, and so it's, you know, it's number of people in your households and income. And no one, um, we had one call, I think, last year, or one or two calls, two calls at the most, but I know for sure about one, and the resident is on a fixed income but did not, but because of the threshold, they did not qualify. So one thing we could do is, is look at, um, you know, revisit these thresholds and sort of set our own, because again, we just mirrored the city of Austin's program, so we could adjust ours, considering Sunset Valley has a higher income than surrounding areas, so...
I think that's a good idea, because that's what we decided to put that together for.
Yeah, yeah.
When we talked about raising the rate.
Correct.
So we need to make it fit.
Yeah, because right now, basically, we have this line item and nobody qualifies for, for the assistance program, but it's built into the budget, so... I would rec, yeah, I, I agree with the Public Works Director, we should, uh, you know, fix the, fix the program so that it helps out our residents that need it, yeah.
Yeah.
Councilor Johnson.
The, I was in favor of the, of raising the rates and doing it over 10 years so that it's just, you know, it's still going up, but, um, but I hear the other side that is sometimes saying, like, well, we would, we don't want this project necessarily, but, you know, we would take lower rates on water. To me, it's just, you know, pay for, like, what you're using, but I do sympathize with, you know, what are we going to do with the money eventually? There, there's certain projects that we will deliberate as a community, but we are, we are just one square mile and there's only so much land that we have, and you guys probably will laugh at this, but I think we're going to get to a point where we're kind of, like, built out, you know, it's just, there's not much more that we can do with the land we have. We gotta maintain the buildings and, well, the roads are another thing, but maintain the buildings, all the facilities that we've built, but I'm hoping we will eventually be in a situation where all the utilities are kind of funding themselves and we're putting money away and we've got our little nest egg for bad times, 18 months and everything else, but then eventually we just have a bubble of money, right? Because if we don't have that million dollars a year that we were originally using to offset the water, and that's taken care of, I, I just feel like we're going to just sit on more and more money and what do we do with it? We've got to start having an idea, I mean, it's kind of like, some, some countries that just, like, find that all of a sudden they, they found a natural resource that is, they can take advantage of, it's just, like, what are you going to do with the money? And maybe y'all think I'm wrong, that we will always find some way to, to spend it, but, um, I just want to make sure we're doing right by the residents, that it's just, like, we're not just making grander and grander facilities for just a small little city like we should, anyway.
Councilor Medicas.
So one of the things that we always talk about ever since I've been involved with the city is our sales tax revenue. And so we don't know what's going to happen with the sales tax revenue, but most of our budget comes from that, so we don't have a guarantee that we're always going to be flush. Um, and, um, if one of those shopping centers, which will happen eventually, goes into redevelopment, that means that income from that shopping center won't be coming in while it's under redevelopment, and we don't know what would be redeveloped. So, I mean, we are where we are now, but I don't know that we can say we're always going to be there. So while we're here, it makes a lot of sense to get some of the projects done that have been on our plate, um, and then see where we are. But if we keep saying we're not going to raise it, we're going to put more subsidies in and we get raises from water suppliers, at some point, we're going to have to say, you know, here's how much it's costing, and i- is that point going to be a sticker shock? Or is it, is it going to be two cups of Starbucks coffee a month? You know what I mean? It's just, I don't know that we can say we're always going to have this flush amount. Just saying.
I, uh, I'm definitely for having the water, like, pay for itself, you know? Uh, I, I remember when Sylvia said that it's an enterprise fund, and, and so many other cities, like, that is a way that they make money so that they can fund other things, and here it's always been weird that we just kind of bleed money on, in it. So getting ourselves to the point where we just pay for it as it is, um, I think is a very smart thing to do, and, you know, a shopping center goes, closes, you know, that's why we have a, all, all I'm saying is, uh, we could find ourselves in a situation where it, it's a very real possibility that we are just growing a pile of money, and what do we do with it at that point? You know, everyone's looking at me like I'm insane, but it's a very real possibility, and I, I think we need to just have a plan for it and, yeah, and so get creative now.
Councilor Rosengard.
The reason I'm against water and wastewater, uh, reduction in our subsidies is because it frees up money to spend on other things. Uh, it frees up money then to go ahead and contribute to community programs. Nobody questions $584,000 on community programs, and many of these programs, there's probably 20 to 30 people who show up, that's not the whole city. And so by letting the city continue with their subsidies, you contribute to the whole city and getting something from that versus coming to events that they never come to. It also, um, I understand that it's an enterprise fund and it should be run like a business. I also know that we did a utility audit and the auditor said, "You are a very fortunate city," period. Uh, he said, "Of course, if, if things switch, change regarding your revenue sources, that you might want to consider, uh, increasing rates." The other thing I am, I know that we discussed about, discussed it many times, is that any time there's an increase that comes from Austin, that we agreed that that increase would be passed on. Now, if it didn't get passed on, even though that was agreed upon and it was voted on, uh, from here forward, we put that in writing, that any time there is an increase in water or wastewater that, and solid waste, that we would pass that on to the residents, so we won't have that big hiccup. And I've heard that for how many years about, we're going to have one big, large fee all of a sudden, even with the city of Austin, they don't come out and all of a sudden your, your water bill is an extra $200 a month more. It, they incrementally increase it, so same thing here. We were, uh, simply agreeing to pass on any increases that Austin passed on to us so that we could at least, and at that point, it was capping the expenses at around $500,000 so we could budget for it, because we couldn't budget for it in the past, and that way, we at least had a dollar amount we could figure every year that we had to cover for subsidies. Thank you. Oh, and by the way, I like the idea of the council ring back here where the city park is, because people will use it back here. They will sit and watch their kids play, they will use it as a seating area, they'll play around with the echo effect, love the idea. Thank you.
Mayor Pretter.
On the subject of increasing the utilities, I think that I would like to see us come up with a cap plan that will actually work for some of our residents before we go any farther with this, especially since I still think we're going to have a, a very uncertain year economically. Inflation is rising and other things, and I'm not sure that this is a good time to put more expenses on people, but I'd really like to see us have a cap plan that we know will work for some of our residents who will really need it before we raise utility rates again.
All right. I will go ahead and open up for members of the public to speak, um, before going back to council discussion. So this time, I need to invite members of the public to step over to the podium and address council.
Thank you, Mayor Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. I think it would be nice to work backwards, um, if someone was willing, the people who came in to ask about this, if, if we could find from them what the number ought to be, you know, if, if they were willing to say, "Well, this is, this is what my income is," that would give us a starting number and, and then work backwards. Um, on that end, I also want to thank staff for, uh, finding such a good solution and negotiating and doing all those background numbers to get the medical down, so thanks to whoever worked on that. Then back to rates. I have long thought, and I was sorry at that time that I wasn't on, um, Budget and Finance when they discussed the utility rates for a number of reasons, um, that the part that we subsidize ought to be the base rate. If we're, because the base rate affects everyone. I have a problem subsidizing wastewater rates for people who, if they were in Austin, would have an $800 water bill and, and, and consequently, a fairly high wastewater rate. So, so I think that, to me, there's all kinds of parts. People say, "Well, let's just, you know, lower the utility rates for everybody." I, I think that you want to, you want to attack it from the base rate, because that does affect everybody. If we did, in fact, subsidize more of the base rate, I'd be okay with that, but then you really have to realize that you're then also subsidizing it for your commercial customers, because you, there's, there's going to be some equity there, and that's a lot, where they play their entire fair share. I don't know if it really flies that you subsidize it only for the residents and not for the commercial, so, so there's a question about that, to me, in my mind, es- especially a question of fairness. But that does at least address everybody, and I really do believe people who use a lot of water ought to pay more money, because they're using a limited resource. I recently had a resident say, "Melissa, I heard you were in favor of increasing the residents and, and make me defen, uh, the rates, and make me defend that." And I, you know, did my best on a short notice kind of thing, I said, "This is a longer conversation," but this is, again, a person who uses a fair amount of water, and it's just, like, I do think that if you use a lot of water, well, then, you know, you should be willing to dig in your pocket for it, you know? So, so I'm, I'm much more in favor of taking care of people who are more frugal with their water and because they're older or whatever. I think that makes sense, and that's why I would, I would take it from a base rate sort of situation. And then, you know, I think it, I often think it would be helpful if our tiers matched Austin tiers, because if it did, then they could see how much money they were saving here in Sunset Valley. It'd be a lot easier defense, it's like, because they do save a lot of money just because they're here. And so those, those are all the parts, and I think, but I think you have to look at it in an apples-to-apples sort of situation, and I think that when you're taking care of people, you should be taking care of your vulnerable people, not the people who are running up your water bills, you know, your public water bills. So in terms of that, I think that's everything else that I had to say, but I was particularly concerned about the utilities and, and the fairness factor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments before we resume our discussion? All right. Continuing with questions or feedback from council? Councilor Johnson?
I was, uh, looking at something else, and then I saw this Burger Center, Reynolds, that is, is that, the $10,000, is that just for?
So, uh, a lot of that is for the weekly, it's sort of an in-kind that we do for SFC, so that's renting the parking lot, the, the one corner parking lot weekly for them, and then Art Fest uses all four of the little lots that you can rent, so annually, so that line item covers all of that, basically renting the parking lot from AISD.
How, how is that written? Do they, is it just, just like a?
So they have a system called Facilitron, unfortunately, and it's, it's, and so, uh, so they've, they've, AISD has contracted with this company, Facilitron, so we have to book through them.
Okay.
It's through the, it's not through the athletics department like it used to be, used to just deal directly with the athletics department, now we deal with, it's the Department of Real Estate. AISD's Real Estate Department, they're the ones who rent out the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Rosengard.
Kyle, are you ready? Okay, page 38 of 70, under revenues. Number 25, Drainage Utility. Why is this showing $0.00 when we collect drainage fees of $4 per household?
We, uh, we, we moved the Drainage Fund to be a department in the Utility Fund.
And, and that happened in FY '25, so FY, FY '24, where you see total activity and budget, Drainage was its own fund, Fund 25, and then in FY '25, it is now a department within Fund O2.
Within utilities.
Correct.
Next, uh, page 38 of 70, Transfers in, uh, O1 General Operating Fund. Why is 25 year to date through August... Why is twenty-five year to date through August at a hundred seventy-four thousand, but the parent budget is two million one hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred twenty-six point fifty-six? And the comparison budget is one million two hundred ninety-eight, uh, five oh one point twenty-seven for a difference of eight hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-five point twenty-nine, which is forty point sixty-seven percent difference. General Operating Fund.
I'd have to look closer to get the exact difference between, for example, the parent, but, you know, this year's budget and next year's mayor's budget, you know, to get the detail. In general, a large portion of that is, you know, these transfers are just accounting entries and some of the accounting entries haven't been made. I was, I've been kind of debating on if I need to make an entry for like, so, so there's, in the general fund, for example, that two million dollars, a lot of that is transfers in from fund balance to fund projects. And so, I mean, there's, you, how can you transfer in from a bank balance? There's not a transaction there. So, at some point, there'll be an accounting entry that gets made, but, yeah.
So, you're saying, saying that maybe you didn't make a transfer yet?
I mean, there's no transfer to be made, there'll be an accounting entry at some point.
But you see where I'm talking, do you see where it is?
Yeah.
Cause the numbers before that was a million four oh six and before that is four oh one and then we go to one seventy-four and I'm going, wow.
So, I believe the one seventy-four is from hot funds into general fund for Art Fest?
Yep, and that, that transfer actually happened already. In other words, the rest are just accounting entries that'll get made at some point.
Hot fund to general fund because of the complication of?
General Operating Fund, okay. And that was?
One seventy-four.
I see it. Uh, for twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. Okay. Page thirty-eight of seventy, transfers in fourteen Street Replacement Repair Fund. It's sixty-nine point ten percent difference, thirty-eight point seventy, same page.
It's, it's the same answer as for the general fund.
Same answer, it can't be the, uh, hot fund to general fund, it's something else.
Uh, okay, so, so if you're asking about why there's a big difference between the actuals and the budget, it's because there's transfers in from fund balance that then gets transferred to CIP. And so, you know, so there's no transfer that actually happens, that's just an accounting entry. And it'll happen at some point, but that's why there's a big difference between the actuals and the budget. If you, if you wanna know exactly what is included in all these numbers, I can send you detailed reports too.
I, I made myself a note on page forty-two of seventy that we are anticipating four hundred thousand less in interest income because of the fact that we did a lot of CIP projects last year. So, we have less reserve, which means a lot of less interest income coming in. And we hope to have at least a million dollars in interest income. Uh, next one is page forty-four of seventy, Audio Visual. It was thirteen thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five and zero in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, th- this is a, a salary line item for a part-time position for a part-time AV tech. And, uh, and we're, yeah, so we don't have that for next year.
Got it. Uh, next one, same page, forty-four of seventy, Telecommunications in twenty-four, twenty-five is zero and twenty-five, twenty-six is forty-six thousand.
You wanna take this?
Yeah, we, we presented this to Budget and Finance. So, we had a utilities line item, fifty-eight, thirty-five, that had all utilities for city facilities, electricity, water, wastewater. And then phones were in there, right? So, we thought it was best, again, for tracking purposes to, to separate those out so that we had a, a line item just for utilities, for those, you know, basic utilities. And then telecommunications pays for the city facility's internet and then phones, including the VoIP phones, cell phones, et cetera. So, it just splits those out.
Okay, page forty-five of seventy, Call Share in twenty-four, twenty-five is zero. But I know we do call share. And now in twenty-five, twenty-six is one twenty-two. Did you move it from another line item?
Yeah, we moved it from Crime Control to General Fund on Chief's suggestion. You know, the nine-one-one call share really serves the whole city, so it should probably be in the general fund.
Thank you. That's it?
Councilor Johnson.
I was, I was going to attribute a forty-six thousand dollar cut in utilities to the solar panels, but I guess, I got really excited. Did tho- those ever go in?
No, we're still waiting for Austin Energy to approve the rebates.
I thought they did. I thought they did like a year and a half ago.
So, we had to reapply when we switched, yeah. And so, we're hopefully getting that done in the next few weeks is what they're planning to do.
The city, Austin City Council approved the agreement, but we have to go back to Austin Energy and reapply for it essentially. So, they, as of right now, they are not generating any energy for us, even though they're?
But they're on.
They're on.
Oh, okay, cool.
No, well, only on local works, not on, not on PDS, so.
Okay. What, what is our electricity bill?
We have so many bills from City of Austin because you think about it too. It's not just electricity for these buildings, but all of the meters, street li- I mean, they're, we, I mean, Lori gets a stack of bills a month.
If you ask, if you ask Lori, she, she previously sent me the energy bill for the, this facility, this, this building so we could compare what the, the production is for these current ones against, you know, what we might get for those. So, she, she actually sent me the breakdown for these three buildings, I can forward that to you.
I have it.
Oh, you have that, okay, sorry. Yep, great, Kyle.
Forty-five hundred a month about? That's for everything. There's maybe fifteen bills here.
Do we, have we ever cleaned these up here?
No.
How do you get really, sorry, this is, how do you get really far into them? Like, you gotta really scrub up the?
They have really long brushes and stuff, so.
Yeah, and I work, yeah. When I, I clean mine, the, they went up thirty percent. I thought it was just gonna be like maybe around in there. It was awesome. Forty-five hundred seems like pretty reasonable actually for an entire city's electricity bill. So, okay, thank you.
Councilor Medikas.
So, one of the, before we started our meeting, it came up about the chairs. So, when we did the renovation of City Hall, we had selected different chairs for, in here, that had padding to them. And apparently, we ran out of budget for the renovation and that might be something we wanna consider, especially since we're having a lot of events here. Just bringing that up.
Carolyn, what was the, did we get a quote for those chairs and do you remember what that was?
I'd have to go back and look, but I think it was around like the five thousand dollar mark for all of them. But I will double check on that real quick and see.
So, I've got a, a list of things I've heard tonight. One is, um, there's all, a lot of discussion about the utilities, particularly around, you know, whether we should move forward with them this year, if we wanna revise the cap plan or the, sort of the Community Assistance Program levels, which I think is in general agreement. And then potentially relooking at the, the subsidies in terms of, as far as resident feedback for the base rate versus the volumetric rate. There's the five hundred K that Councilor Medikas proposed for essentially a savings account for the Uplands project as a potential bring-back item or funding item. Council Ring is really more of a discussion, I think, that, I haven't heard any objections to actually moving the Council Ring. It's just a question of the right location. The discussion that will be not necessarily budget-related, but for our council retreat and also next council meeting for the budget amendment was for how we handle change orders and contingency for current projects. And then just the suggestion right now for potentially upgrading the chairs in the council chamber and getting, relooking at that quote to see what the price of that would be so we can bring that back as an intended item as well, or a potential budget adjustment as well. Well, tolls is on that, I've got it as a separate note because I wanna follow up with, with staff in terms of like what that might look like. Because like Chief said, if some people are paying tolls or using it for tolls, but other people are not getting that benefit, you know, how do we actually? It doesn't need to be blanket, doesn't need to be, so I wanna follow up with staff on that one before. I don't think it's something I can say we can bring back for next session, but it's something I think we should look at. I think this, next year, we're also gonna be doing a benefits analysis.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that we?
Right, that, I think it's, we're gonna be looking at our, you know, every, every few years, we do a salary survey. We also do a benefit survey. This year, we're gonna be doing a benefit survey and I think that would be a valuable one to include in that too, just in terms of like how other cities are handling it or if that's something that would be competitively advantageous for us, so. Um, other things that we want to potentially bring back for our next meeting, which will be hopefully the budget adoption. And again, like we've done in the years past, we can have a, a side list of these and as part of a motion or if we wanna do that as a, you know, adopt the budget and then have a separate motion on each of those items, we can do that as well. But we'll make sure that we have the, these lists plus the other ones that we have more information that we'll be able to bring back like the janitorials versus and potentially the monument signs as well for, for more granular cost basis. Councilor Johnson.
So, five, five hundred thousand for Uplands would be beyond, wasn't there two fifty in for?
That's for the construction documents, this would be for the future construction.
So, this would be taking, this, again, is where we're projecting it in the year. This would be taking five hundred of this non-committed, moving it over to live and committed. But as we keep a separate spreadsheet, the, the bulk of this, actually all of this, is the water conservation. So, there would be an additional five hundred K that would be committed to, to future Uplands, you know, construction. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
It's, it's just committing the funds, which, yeah.
I'll get there.
Councilor Rosengard.
Did you already change the non-committed number?
So, yeah, the non-committed number is drawn down because of, you know, transfers and other various things. But yeah, so, you know, the, the year begins with, the reserve stays the same because that's set by policy. So, this is how the year begins. And then the year ends.
I see it. I was looking at the top and seeing a million on non-committed and on the bottom, you have five hundred non-committed. Got it.
Other questions? So, our next step in the budget process will be to bring it back for potential approval on the sixteenth. If you do have any questions, I ask you to get them to staff as early as possible so that they can provide answers as part of the, the budget agenda item that'll be part of that. Typically, we do a draft agenda, you know, the two weeks before. Ideally, we'd have any new agenda items for that one, but you're given that this is a budget, it's all rolled up into one. We just wanna make sure that staff has enough time to prepare any responses and, and the detail that would be necessary for people to make their decisions. I'll work with staff to make sure that we account for the items that were brought up today and that we have a, any updates that are needed for that. And then we'll hopefully be able to adopt the budget. We'll also have the, the regular set of contractual renewals and adopting any changes to the rates if we go forward with that. So, those will all be ancillary agenda items as, as part of the budget itself. So, council, we will only have that one meeting before our October meeting. So, we'll have the sixteenth, we'll have one meeting in October and then we won't meet until we canvass the results. And so, staff is also gonna be going and looking for a time when we can make sure that works for all the current council members as well as the incoming council members. So, we have very few meetings between now and when we're gonna have a new council seated. So, I, I, again, let me know if there's anything else that has, that you need preparation for the budget. And if it looks like we'll need additional time, then we can also use the time between now and October first when we have to have a budget in place to do that. But hopefully, I think we're pretty close, you know, I think hopefully we're gonna be able to finalize the budget on our next meeting. Any other questions? I see, not a question, but?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second? Okay. Seems very unusual, very early in the evening compared to recent meetings. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the votes in aye? All right, we are adjourned at eight o'clock.